Anyone in the public who wishes to speak, make sure you fill out a card and hand it to Diana or myself. Thank you.
Do we have them on line yet?
No.
Okay.
(inaudible)
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 Okay. Technology.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
The time is... One more thing. One more detail. Hit it. The time is now 4:03, and I am calling the special meeting of the Grand County Council to order. It is March 22nd. Present are... Twenty-six, excuse me. Twenty-six. Present are Greg Halliday, Jaylen Haas, Evan Claffer, Curtis Wells, Mary McGann. On the phone is Rory Paxman and Patrick Trimk. We will now begin our meeting. We have one agenda item on this meeting, and so we will begin by giving the public an opportunity to express their thoughts. I think that's very important. However, I do want to set some guidelines that... That I want the public to abide by. These guidelines are be respectful. There will be no disparaging remarks of character or competency. Limit your comments to three minutes. When your name is called, come to the podium or the table, whichever you're more comfortable. State your name clearly, and at that time, we will begin timing for your three-minute comment. So, my... The first person is Jeremy Day.
Thank you, Jeremy. I know there's been a lot of controversy about the who's, how's, and what's, and I don't really want to get into that at this time. What we... What we saw as citizens was a need for a change. And we knew we'd be opposed by a lot of people. We knew... We knew people wouldn't agree, and we knew a lot of people would agree. But we saw a need for it. When the bill proposed itself, and we saw that it was a change of government, and we saw that it was also going to require Grand County and one other county in the state to change their form of government, we saw a need to petition that. We monitor it. We watched it very carefully. We read it. We understand it. It's in no way is it a slight against one, or this, or that, or was it not intended to be subvert or anything? As a matter of fact, I think the process of itself is very clear and cut and dry. As citizens, we see a need to change our form of government. Philosophically, we could get into why. And why, we'll just tell you the main reason. I feel like we've been isolated for too long from the state. I've seen the needs of the community having been born and raised here. I've seen how other governments operated within the state as I lived and went to school. And I saw that we weren't included, and we weren't being taken very serious. And I think it's time for us, as a community, to come together and recognize that everyone here, regardless of what our form of government is, will have the opportunity to participate in an election. Nobody is barred from that here, being as they're a Grand County citizen. They will be able to participate in a vote and in an election. And I think it's important to recognize that, that not one side has control or not. We are a very unique community, and I think one of the fears that I hear is that we're going to be like other places in Utah. There is no way, shape, or form we could ever be like another place in Utah. We're Grand County. We have a diverse community, sure. But the community needs to have a platform in which it can participate with the other communities within the state. And that's our main reason for filling this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Lynn Jackson.
Thank you. Before I start, I can either read from my iPhone, or I presented something to council today. Do you have a copy of that? Let me read that. Could I get a copy of that? And then I want it to read from my iPhone.
You promised to give it back. I promised to give it back.
I'll give it back.
(inaudible)
I was going to bring a copy. I love my drawers.
All right.
I appreciate the opportunity to present... My comments tonight are more... Have to do with the process of... And the need, or the... What we perceive as the lack of need for the council to be taking action. We would ask you to carefully consider your actions here today. The legislation HB 24 clearly... Well, I guess here I am. I'm going to be ad-libbing. I've read this legislation enough, I think I can talk from head, or talk from my head. The opening sections of this bill talk about the need for... If a government is out of compliance, which I believe everybody recognized we're out of compliance with this law, it simply says that a county, if you're out of compliance, will take action by July 1st, 2018, to bring yourselves into compliance. It does not say a county legislative body will take action. It says a county will take action. So in this case, we filed a petition as citizens to take that action. That action is simply to put on the ballot in November a question to our voters whether or not they want a study committee. The resolution you're looking at tonight does exactly the same thing. So I guess one of my questions is, why repeat that process? We not only filed our notice of intent to petition, today we handed in 421 signatures. We need 230 to put this on the ballot. So the question of whether this is going to go to the citizens for a vote is already underway. I therefore don't see the need for the council now. Some of the legal arguments I've heard in opposition to that are that there are some who read this statute and say a county legislative body must take action. And I'm here to tell you, that's not what it says. It says a county will take action. And that's what we've done through citizen petition. If you look closer at Section 301.3 of HB 225, it says if a process to adopt an optional plan is initiated under Section 302 or 303, and that is either the citizen-initiated process or a council-initiated process, it clearly says the county legislative body may not initiate the process. So I would suggest you're putting yourselves at risk by filing a resolution to... For whatever reason, I suspect, to negate the citizen's petition that has been filed and is underway. And I think you need to think about that very closely. If that happens, the people who have filed the petition will litigate. You can rest assured of that. You're probably going to... This thing's going to end up in court one way or the other. I'm probably getting close to the three minutes. So I think I've made the points. The bill doesn't require the legislative body to take action. We are taking action, and this will be on the ballot in November, whether the citizens want a study committee or not. Is that the beeper for three minutes? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Peck.
My name is Michael Peck. I'm concerned, after I read the paper, that this thing stated very clearly there was going to be no recall clause in this thing, so that means they're unassailable. They can't be called on the carpet. There's no term limits. I didn't know that anywhere else outside of China did that. It doesn't ring very democratic that way. I'm concerned that the paper said that there was already a committee being formed before the county council received the information. If so, that brings to question some ethical questions about how they received that information before the county council, and also what, and who, and why, and when that that was received. We need to know that, because if it was from your own body, and there's an ethical question there, then we can understand why there shouldn't be... Why there wouldn't be any reason for a recall, because that would be a reason for a recall. Thank you.
Thank you. Walt Dabney.
My name is Walt Dabney. I live in Moab City in Grand County, and I've been hearing a lot of confusion around House Bill 224, and what the law says about what Grand County needs to do to come into compliance with its former government. So I went to online to the Utah Association of Counties' official summary. It seems pretty clear, and I'm going to quote from it. "In a county that is not currently operating in an authorized form of government, the county legislative body..." That's you, as I understand it. "...the county legislative body must initiate a change in their form of county government before July the 1st, 2018. At the conclusion of the process, the county must adopt one of the authorized forms." There are four described in the bill now. And then when I compared it to what the actual bill says under Chapter 52A, "Changing Forms of County Government," first of all, they're talking about commissions, and they're talking about what we have, which are two very different things. When I compared the bill, Part 1, General Professions 1752A-103, line 585, says that "in a county that operates under a form of government that is not described in subsection 2, which describes the four allowable forms of government." And that includes us and Morgan County. We're the only two that are out of compliance. "The county's legislative body shall, before July the 1st, 2018, initiate the process under Section 1752A-302 of changing the county's form of government." The title of that is "County Legislative Body Initiation of Adoption of Optional Plan Procedure." On line 904, it states, "A county legislative body..." Again, that's you. "...must initiate the process of adopting an optional plan by adopting a resolution to submit to the voters the question of whether a study committee should be established as provided in Section 1752-301." Nowhere in this procedure does it say that I, as a citizen, or anyone else as a citizen, can take off and go start our own petition. It says you have to do it in Morgan and Grand County, Utah. You don't need to take my word for it. It's clear in the law. I'm reading directly from the law. I'm not making this up. So I just hope that the county attorney, and you folks have had time to really read this bill, because a number of us have read it, and it's very clear what it says. We are not a commission. We are an out-of-compliance entity, and you... Us in Morgan County have to fix ours, and you have to lead the initiative. So thank you very much for letting me talk, and I hope we can get through this in a way that most of us feel good about. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Joe Day.
Whether I can or I can't be here to represent other individuals that can't make it, I'm here. There's a lot of individuals that are working right now, not represented in this room, wanted me to voice some opinions. Start off with, this legislation was brought about because of an incident in Weber County where the council or the commission were working at asserting the voice of the community. That's how it started. So here we are, doing the same thing tonight, it sounds like. People have already put forward a proposal, a signing ballot to do that, and you guys are stepping out and beyond that. I'm here to support the change. Everybody's arguing about how, and why, and where, and everything like that, talking about it not being bipartisan. But if you go look at the bill, the legislation, it was unanimously voted on in both House and Senate, other than two no votes. It was quickly signed by the governor and pushed forward as just being normal process of getting the counties within the requirements. We were outside of them. We have been for some time. It's not been functioning, obviously. Here we are right now. We had seven board members, and we just got surprised. It's hard to do when you guys are part-time and getting paid $8,000 a year. You have to do other things for a living. You've got other things you have to do. With the new form of government, we'll have people in place that will be full-time and accountable. They will have the responsibility to do their job, and if it's not done, then we move forward. So I'm in support of it. We need to watch where and what we do, I guess. There's a lot of people watching this. Within a matter of days, 420-some people in this community stepped forward very quickly and signed. They're in favor of this. People say that we can't do it in... Well, let's talk about what we do have. It sounds good on paper. It's a utopia that sounds great when you read it and you think about it, but it's not, and we need to move forward. We need representation. We're isolated. We've isolated ourselves. That's why we got surprised. We're not an active part of what goes on on a state level, and it hurts us that live here. That isolation is fine if you don't have to make a living, if you have a form of income, you don't have a family, but we need representatives in this town. Those that are raising children, watching their kids go to college, and hope... And dream that they might be able to come back and have a job here that would bring them back home. But we don't see that on a regular basis. So we need proper representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Doug Fix.
My name's Doug Fix. I sent a letter earlier. I hope you all had a chance to read it, and kind of, obviously, whether we need a new form of government, to me, is an issue up to the citizens. It's always been. But as I pointed out in my letter, when we initially adopted the change of government in '92, the legislature passed, just before we did that, an amendment that basically tried to unwind everything in the rest of the statute and make it unworkable. We ignored it at the time, and when challenged by the county association of attorneys that they were going to sue us, and they explained their rationale, while the legislature intended you, you know, us not to be able to exercise that constitutional right, we said, please sue us. And they never did. And that's why that's never been challenged in 25 years. Nobody's ever filed a lawsuit, because we were meticulous in following the statute at the time. And, you know, the whole thing is, is that there's a constitutional right for voters in counties to select their government. This statute, what I call the forced change provision, says the state's going to tell us what our government is. Our charter reflects the exercise of Grand County voter rights pursuant to the Constitution and laws in effect in 1992. And until the citizens vote in a new government, that, under the Constitution, can't change. The legislature can pass as many bills as they want. They don't have the right to change or impede a constitutional right. So my request to you is defend the rights of the county voters, and, you know, try to do it nicely at first, and point out to the legislature this obvious blunder they made. And if they don't do it, well, then Andrew is going to have to go to court and clarify it. But in the end, the, you know, my kind of going to the resolution on the table now is my judgment is, don't give these folks another thing to argue about. If it's legal, and Andrew says it's legal, I would let them just go ahead and run the game. I think, as it sinks into the petitioners, that the heads we win, tails you lose approach they've kind of designed isn't going to work. They're going to lose a lot of enthusiasm for pursuing a new plan, because it takes a ton of work.
Wait.
What was the disparaging comment? I don't appreciate it. What was the disparaging comment? That we sat right and set up a heads we win, tails you lose situation. Well, isn't that what it is?
Okay. We can't have the public talking with each other.
Okay. No. But I mean, you see, the point is, under the statute, we either vote one of these new four, which is not consistent with our present form as voted on by our voters, or we have to accept something else that we didn't vote on. To me, that's a heads we win, tails you lose. But... And it won't stand. So I really encourage you to stand up for the citizens of Grand County and tell... And I encourage these folks...
So time's up. Time...
Time up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sorry.
Time's up. Kevin Walker.
I'm going to try to dig less than one minute. I don't think this is really the right forum to debate the merits of the, you know, how we got here, or future forms of government. I think what you're saying today is kind of a technical legal question, and there are two competing interpretations of HB 224. Under one interpretation, the citizen-initiated petition that was referred to before takes precedence, and we'll go down that route. Under a different interpretation, the county has to initiate. And if so, under the first interpretation, it certainly does no harm to pass this resolution. Under the other interpretation, you must pass the resolution. So either way, it seems like that's the thing to do. And I think other questions, we'll have lots of time to debate them later. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That is the end of the cards that I received on this to-talk. County Council. Do I have any county council members that would like to speak on this agenda item?
I just have a couple things that I would like to say. We have had outside attorneys look at the resolution and the HB 224, and they came up with that we, as a legislative body, shall... And the word "shall" trumps. Shall institute... Initiate this through a resolution. So that is... And for some historical facts, I would like to comment on the history of our present form of government. We voted this in in 2000... In 1992, it came by 86% of the voters voted to move to this form of government. In 2004, we once again had... Came up to whether or not we wanted to study changing our form of government. It was put on the ballot to study changing our form of government, was defeated by 65% at that time. In 2012, the same question was brought up, and it was defeated by 74%. So 74% of the people in our community in 2012 preferred our form of government. That being said, I would have a motion... Yes.
Well, I'll just add some additional comments to that. You know, this issue is really not about politics. The bill is about compliance, you know? What does that mean? And we've got a lot of opinions. You know, the fact is, is that while I can appreciate and understand citizens', you know, frustration with the state not allowing term limits or recalls or those things, the fact is, is the state moved on from those things in the year 2000. We were allowed to continue in the current form that we are, you know, more or less grandfathered. But this idea and narrative that this is some plan out to get Grand County just is ignoring a lot of facts. And there were many counties impacted by this bill. Whether you like the form of government or not, we are not an independent entity out here in the desert. We are a political subdivision of the state of Utah. The state of Utah, in state code, provides forms of government that we can be. The state of Utah moved on from our optional form in the year 2000. So, you know, I agree with some of the citizens, there's an absolute time and place to debate this form of government. And let me tell you, after being in this thing for a year, I'm going to be involved in that debate, because I believe we can do a lot better than what we are now. And many of you that know me know that I feel that way. But this specific issue is a matter of law, and I do agree that we've got some gray area in this statute where, on one hand, it's clear, it says the county shall. On the other hand, you're ignoring the citizen's right to create a petition and initiate the process. And the nature of this law, as stated by a citizen, if you've Googled it or taken the time to read the bill, is to protect the citizen's ability to initiate a change of form of government process. And so to look at that, and this statute in a vacuum and say, but in this specific occasion, that is appropriate, I think, you know, pick your poison. occasion, that is appropriate," I think, you know, pick your poison. And this action, to vote on this resolution, the way I'm receiving this as a council member is, is moving to the center in the event the county is litigated from one, you know, side of this political debate, but creating grounds for, of course, these citizens that filed this petition to initiate the process is now saying that that's being ignored or run over the top of, and wouldn't be surprised if they litigate. So, but there's, there are voices in this that I think need to be heard. We have an election judge who's read statute and has been involved in discussions. Our county attorney, at the last public meeting, went on the record and mirrored the legal interpretation of the elected clerk auditor and election judge. And now we have a third-party legal analysis, which I absolutely respect and can understand the finding they have. So the question I have is, is our county attorney, has his position changed? Because in these instances, that's where we, that's where we look. So I don't know, you know, Dan Lee, if you can speak to that, or what, but we had pretty firm legal interpretation. Now we have a third party with a different legal interpretation. And as a county legislator, I feel like I'm kind of caught here, so. And I would, I would like to hear, and I think we should hear, the opinion of the election judge.
The opinion of the county attorney who came through our office. Can you come?
Yeah, come up and introduce yourself, please, Dan Lee.
My name is Dan Lee Welch. I'm a paralegal at the county attorney's office. I'm the one that emailed the memo that you guys all have, I assume, in your red folders. That was an independent review by Par Brown, as you guys know, and it was on our behalf, and we submitted it to you guys, and that, we understand that side of it and support that. So the county attorney's opinion essentially changed.
And I spoke with Andrew Fitzgerald this afternoon, just to see if he was going to be here and to hear from the person's mouth what his thoughts were, and he said, yes, his opinion had changed, and that after further reading and time to study, he agrees with the finding of Par Brown.
Mary, I would prefer a member of the office to speak for the attorney and not second-hand conversations. And I still would like to hear from the elected clerk auditor.
I have been in conversation this afternoon with Lieutenant Governor's Office, and they've been working with their attorneys at the Attorney General's Office. They said, because the law is so ambiguous, that maybe, they would not.
I'm having a difficult time here.
They would not comment, give me a comment until they reviewed the law a little more, but they did kind of recommend that maybe no action be taken until that time. And I guess I just need to have clarity from.
This is sad, I'm having a difficult time here.
Sorry, I'm speaking as loud as I can.
He's on the other side of a wall there.
So Pat, just to back up, I spoke with the LG's office today, and I have an email from them, and they're, they've worked with the Attorney General's Office with their attorney, and they said that the law is so ambiguous that they really didn't want to comment right now. They recommended that maybe we hold off on action, but for, you know, if you do take action, I guess I need to have direction of what to do with the petition that I have been given by the petitioners. They do have sufficient signatures. I haven't checked them, but they have more than is necessary. So I guess my, I would proceed in processing the petition as the county clerk.
Yes, I think, I think that's a wise thing to do, and I think to, for us to pass a resolution, I don't think one's going to hurt the other. Do I have a motion? Yes, Ms. Hox.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to move to adopt the proposed resolution pen. Got legal review. That designates the date of November 6, 2018, for a special election, and that designates the purpose of such special election to ask voters, "Shall a study committee be appointed to consider and possibly recommend a change in Grand County's form of government?"
And authorize.
And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion by Jaylen Hawks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of adopting the resolution of the Grand County Council, State of Utah, designating November 6, 2018, for a special election, and designating the purpose of such special election to ask voters, "Shall a study committee be appointed to consider and possibly recommend a change in Grand County's form of government?" And seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the resolution. Rory Paxman.
I can't hear the motion, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Patrick.
I can't hear the motion.
The motion is, "To pass a resolution of the Grand County Council, State of Utah, designating November 6, 2018, for a special election, and designating the purpose of such special election to ask voters, 'Shall a study committee be appointed to consider and possibly recommend a change in Grand County's form of government.'" The motion was made by Jaylen Hawks, it was seconded by Greg Halliday. We have asked for a vote. Right now, we have Greg, how would you vote, Patrick?
I'm opposed.
Okay, Rory?
I oppose.
Okay. The motion passes. Four, two, three.
I didn't get an opportunity to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you.
Apologize.
Okay. Who's opposed? Three opposed, I assume.
Thank you.
I assume, since you didn't raise your hand, I made an assumption. And we know what an assumption is. So the vote passed by four to three, Greg Halliday, Jaylen Hawks, Evan Clapper, Mary McGann in favor, Patrick Trim, Rory Paxman, and Curtis Wells opposed. Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Curtis Wells, seconded by Jaylen Hawks, all in favor. Passes unanimously, I'm assuming that Patrick and Rory agree.